Koko sanet kaysakay, rutungata lukayang wey pagonin tonpe, inlan uyakupur toror kaysakwaluot. Ranuot niyasil, sulay silisak baran kauonor ya githreisak lemau. Ranuot uyaraan kariawan uyakupur tororot. Chaelen kagan katlanan uyakupur akteban katyenan lowlo iban ulian taidyo pegitaran wanbaron Perez, engkak ulian taidyo uyalauluon rutungata uyakupurot.
Kalangan koom, mrs. Speaker. Chael kupurayaw, kupural lowlo, emenemen nan kupurayban padawan sanjsal. Oko tsamat soviti labalap. Ibatonon, tonon timmasaboyek, innamenek wole iban padon sagrataban kupuramun. Be liaya ramaskeban emen, sudo warong yentak umon kupurar. Wey gipilbilme tey niyek kazen kupure men sanan ranuot. Ibaton wolyanti pey gipilbiluot. Sagrataban kupurar kayiu, kia atungal katen, be kupuramukalangan kolokol atungal mauur. Sika keelay lukonot, ran kap. Wka paigan koros yenteken kapai, kapai gin kitro bilkorobatan kitambarayan ranuot. Mayin tsamat ko'ut labalap. Sudo meagut kitaramas misabang kentekelip. Kom na atskeel ukoporabor. Seporot ilaisan marayan kabun ranuot, rotogik. Iran karen kupuramku amawiginti hit sabulmar yen kamarayan. Kusenkak alakonggiyam marayantik kupuramun. Wato ngalpugokan, misabahan padoyang lele nan yekupur tenitin ranuot. Mayin tsamat ko'ut labalap. Sibiltsamanta emen yangat. Barabor nan uwing pilibin. Kiyew songon karap, atitloyang masikalanan paluwar. Mayin tsamat ko'ut labalap. Iirtsa metok takayi. Woi iirtsa kilep medin masan ta asonggan koros. Kin uyawuyokoytanson kupurom. Iirtsa kilep medin masan. Asuma asidil bilbilan paluwar opanengan kin kosangren kitaramas. Ansebul marlem tok barabot isudagimukita. Kazen kupurayi, wato ngalworak, ta barabor nan muwani pilibin. Porangkat, tsoanipayamau, misanamau troton ansanapa. Mayin tsamat ko'ut labalap, atsoanamna to't orogadun mangi. Ki daramas laut chang, to'ra trogiben kit. Kaden katkitu, adan mar kapa insanan ranuot. Kusenkak barabarantik ansanamau tikapatan ma, tikapetengat maro. Aimet nyaralap, mayin tsamat ko'ut labalap. Saakan mesidis sanjsalisangli tungalimisalakong, soggadun kupuro kaysakban kupuraru, sabulman kitak tungatsagratan. Kapenguput kaden mayin sanan ranuot. Imorana at kauonot, sondosonggonor, sontom labalap, komu jingdis kreis, katkoros. Aman.
Kalangan, wanbaron, desanator Perez, wey gilowlo, bakomchiyang diyer, ulian kanditaidi, oktae kage katlanan uyakupur iban tonase chiefler, kom lukworan marakan.
Senator Artson Abraham. Senator Kiko Abis Jr. Senator Isaac Artois.
Hey.
Senator Ricky Carr.
Hey, my.
Senator Sensei E. Espar.
My.
Senator Wilfred Edman. Senator Bill E. Edwards.
Isomol.
Senator Stevie G. Edwin. Senator Victor Hugo L. Irons.
Hey, my.
Senator Ariel Yopie Joab. Senator Alfred Inladora. Senator Daniel Laban. Senator Edgar W. Liganet.
Hey, my.
Senator Tendi Tesco Louis. Senator Benjamin H. Ludwig.
Itumol, my.
Senator Marhari Miguel. Senator Sheldon G. Neff.
Yetne, my.
Senator Noel B. Perez.
Hey, my.
Senator Junisho E. Simon.
Hey.
Senator Nitaro A. Simuna.
Hey, my.
Senator Francisco Simram. May mrs. Speaker. Hey, korm, mrs. Speaker.
Kalangan, sanjsal magday sabulman ku korum, magdayka katlanan sabumatay uyakupur. Atung kupuring kapulian taidyo uyasabulmatay sagratan kaping. Melal sagaran misiko kaping lap, ang kupuren ini lap. Sagaran kayipuni wau lap ang kupuren. Rakshoko, wau lap ang kupuren isoko, wau nki sabulmar likantko, nanalangko, nankan yeiko. Wato ngalap kaitipaliantriak, momocho government, national, state, local. Wau nki kabina, in tonpe. Honorable Stephen Sanchozef, wau nki kariawan kabina, honorable Harold M. Obick. Wau nki songkopung labalap, honorable Nelson Joseph, oyang omu songkopung kan koros. Osakset, itungalwawong Vice Speaker Michael, floor leader Abram, honorable Senator Kankoros. Langlang saomoro, oliso soriso. So masakan, langlang kasombalikan in way nan coloruot, men tonpe koros nan chamberuot, nan kalal, maslikin kalal. Raka't, oktae leopenan uyakupuren ranuot, wey iban ponase floor leader, pantak kaluwektae lan uyakupuren ranuot. Kalangan mayin speaker, moni iban yang sagratay tungal sagratan. Kabung kayipuni yo'wau, kom kupurabuan kakace baje yang sabulmamuner. Patoyer nilang. Osakset, itungal wau nki kemui, wau nki Vice Speaker, wau nki kan baka payan honorable members. Ibil tungalonki wawong railkan me baje yang chaelmijeng ranuot nan kalari. Speaker baje yang kemui bau sia. Ran wau kaping payamau, tonpe, melal irailkan me pepeyan men kabesakan. Mayin mrs. Speaker, imen batuwan uyatakamugut obeki. Apulben samajal channel, engkak kapantela. Sanjsal kamugut, in sabulmatay floor leader, chaelen kapantela, watawato, alaldan channel. Wey ki utuban kamugut omiya, in sabulmatay channel kapantalar, kemui floor leader. Kalangan speaker, kom kupuramoni iban blau. Katsulamungu uyatakamugut ayenkak, imen bagitak chaelen kasamumay samajal auditor. Mr. Paul, me yang baje yang chaelmijeng ranuot nan kalari. Kalangan floor leader, wey ki point of privilege, bakomulian taylor. Melal kalanganin public auditor, Mr. Eric Paul, wey ki yang baje yang taylor uyakupuren ranuot. Mier de point of privilege, kemui Senator Irons.
Kalangan speaker, kom kupurabo, itungal sagaran wau kayipuni yang baje yang eti sabulmamuner, patoyer nilang. Melal kupurenetonal mol, itungal wau tinkomu. Speaker, vice floor, kampuka pay honorable Senator Kankoros. Itungal wau on koros me yang baje nan kalari. Obil tonpe wetinsek makatititayan sabulmarayan nen kayer. Speaker, eh tungalinkakabun, wey ki point of privilege, mrs. Sanjsal, floor leader. Yang subuote speaker, imen paton, kabatayang itungal. Kupurayang kapurayang begik, chaelen kasamo sabulmakay public auditor, yi itulap net, Mr. Eric Paul. Lew kapurayang ew labalap, lew. Kalangan.
Kalangan kupuramui Senator Irons, inana wap wey ki point of privilege, sanjsal yang kemuyang. Mier de point of privilege, sangre Senator Taikan, masilar iban, lew ponase sabulmatay floor leader. Kalangan speaker, itungal kau sebal, speaker imen uyatakamugut obeki chaelen kak torogiti, o apali 6U walu nan kalander.
Re, emen.
Sanjsal makamugut hiu mia yel chaelen, katyambo 6U walu, yi yasun kat kilong. Kamutan kosenetkan, or resolutionkan. Daikat katye bo 6U walu, woma koros sabulmanki rasuma, wak daikat lamuwa, o iban lew ponase floor leader. Speaker wau, i sagare momocho simbaluot obeki chaelen suspend order of business. Torogiti iban order of today, o apali robotkan bahis standing committee report. Patrowan makamugut hiu mo, mia kariaman bang kamuguto. Kalangan, sanjsal makamugut mia yel, o mia utuban kamuguto karate, imen bagitak chaelen katyang ban order of today, yi standing committee report. O iban ponase sabulmatay chiefler.
Standing mrs. Report, number reyapki isakwalula in rejektor ma, me pit. Recomited SCR number 201-25 on LB number 248-25 LB1, sang salmigumkin health.
Sanjsal me report wetan report outangse, sang sabulmatay committee and rosonmaw, karate men ponase committee, melal chairman net.
Kalangan kemui speaker. Moni iban patro ay tungal sagar misikilang wau, on kauon. Patrayang kupuramui sagaran kayipuni yo'wau, me patoyern nilang on tonpe isarabuot. Nan wasan uyalamalame itungal sagaran wau ngenkau mayin speaker. Ulik wawet Vice Speaker, floor leader. Wau on honorable senators kan koros. Patrayang kupuramay wau nki irailkan me yang taweta uyalamalame nimesang kabun ranuot. Nimelal honorable Eric Paul, tonpe state public auditor. O irailkan me pepeyan men kabesakan. May mrs. Speaker, niwamen padawan pada sabulmamakamidian rosonmaw, paton uyatakamugut. Chaelen kalangan uyalamalame kekamutan report 6 reyapki isakwalu, lepinial rey isaklimau, bagit kariaman.
Re, emen.
Sanjsal kamugut, sanjsal sang sabulmatay chairman and rosonmaw, wey ki ya mia utuban kamuguto ay man ponase koros moutrung kamuguto masan iyi.
Hey, hey.
Wua masan iso, kamugut paytar, ya masan de point chairman.
Kalangan kemui speaker, wau sebal. Nyaralap. Eh. Standing committee report me 6 me patrowan aftrang sagar kita. Postpen recommended, standing committee report number reyapki ew lepinial rey isaklimau. Me pit kamutan kosenet number reyapki, reyapki isakwalu lepinial rey isaklimau, LD ew. Nyaralap may mrs. Speaker, honorable senators kan. Iban patrowan sagar kita atre postpen tato'k, o report pen me sabulmamakamidir report kiya rantri. Me anana pen korongrongan uyawuyang winiu. Re, nyaralap may mrs. Speaker, sulay, sulay riaw. Eh korongrong uyawuyang kempan kamarayan. Eh nimelal ECE o high school. Bil nan ranu'te korongrong bil uyawuyang farmers fishermen's market. In tonpe. O kemseklan palema korongrong bil uyawuyang raill rano, yi. Chief executive kan, oles lady kan, and win, win tonpe. Sapalapet o sampepekan. Eh nyaralap mayin mrs. Speaker, eh nan korongrong ey uyawuyo, ey tiyarakta nan kempan kamarayan. Me ECE kin. Men katinayan kan rakin kabatayang local. Pey in sakadreil. Riong irail palewa sedakap. Ah secondary the high school, irail kome songosongan bill. Kasalata raillutut, ap, pisongsongan uyawuyang. Eh men katinayan pey in sakadreil en riaw. O ma bilapala kasaudiyang ew. O ma bilapala bukitakalan kosenet en mia, apan mia kosenet? Bagitreil en landriyong o itawen. Eh. Iban patrowan itimat, may mrs. Speaker, and sanjsal me witness koros makupuramay toke. Me sabulmamay kamidian rosonmaw koronge, irail koros utung kamutan kosenet wet. Wey ki iban kakairata to promote, eh pey in sakadreil me mawang roson, rosonma. O bilbangan kagan sawase irail somotkan o sousetkan. O iban patrowan itimat, may mrs. Speaker, wopatrowan lukayang, tonon sabulmamakamidian rosonma, honorable senators kan koros. Iran kawitkan, engkak patrayang sagarata orla, me patrowan uyayar, pey nka'gan kamaoyala, kaitara la. Eh sagarata orla wet may mrs. Speaker. Eric.
Kalangan senator net, wey kapesin report, me mier, mier de masan de bandungpo, kemui senator taylor.
Kalangan kau mayin speaker. Ah moni iban, patpatu masan ranuot. Ah kampatu kupurabay tumasagatang kayipuni wau kapato. Sabagang misansale nilang masan ranuot. Di men wau ngenkau nen maluot Vice Speaker, floor leader and honorable senator kan koros. Wauta republic auditor. Men tonpe kan koros me yi yang sabatay uyalamalaben masan ranuot. Speaker imen patrowan, patrog ay tungal chairman. Chairman net. O bidang kasalida ay tungal sawasong opurwut. Engkak sanjsal me report number reyapki isakwalula, pey rey isaklimau. Ma masan lang report yo'mukopurputosang dislater on committee. Engkak frontrok kawit pan kosenet yo'mesoku sukinkosanedi me. Ainso kan me government. Paki tato'gimoni wey pagon poengkak. Daramas pan tato'gimoni wey pagon poengkak payintangmung. Ma mia government function yo'wana nakatering. Te nimoin school, tepinimovini. Ha nan kosenet, ekosanedi me bansyo'to, malawalawasang local food riaw. Pan yang mio nan kwatru, tenan teikautu. Re, ainso me committee tropin korongkamutan kosenetu. Eh mio, pekasil mio. Ma somotkan sousetkan, patingkak kau nipata itar soto. Wata pangkosenetu'to, inongkosenetu'to, engkak awta'to, engkak mio mongan tonpe itama. Re, committee kaprela, kusengkak tuwang raill somotkan souset, porangkak kawit, ya sustainability. Eh onkamutan kosenetu'to. Re ya'i me ay tungal chairman, eh report yo'me, sepil kampit pin lukayato irails. Daramas pay me tuwalin kit, eh fish market, tuwalin market, akai bilkin light. O irail yang kawit. Re, ninduwan tamu committee tiyada me eh esepan no kiyata kapal. Akankak, kaypangkak tato'gkosan duwan. Iitram me wmia, epami ananen mio sawaspa renambuan, irail makinalita ma'am onesap, o office. Akarasapa ni school o ni mouning. Ni schoolkan me irail makinnotki la ma'am rey raill nimovini kan, nimoin school. Ha office nisinoki kumpail lang raill matang. Wew koncern me mio, rekak notki yang school ma'am. Harapsousu wale, raill tungal paypayo, lel muro weekslu wapokalane sombu. Re rekawit me rewuk harita kapal, souset patu'to, repisulakak aleta ma'am. Re ma rapan aleta ma'am mio tani, ala muro paypaytenan wigodro, arpatrowan me bans'tong ya kapali. Re ya'i me report wet jongosongan men kawewo me, mia tuwongir irailkan me, pekasil mio marapangkak. Kin provide itar local food the mama be. W, kosenetu'to, engkak tutok, rekawit yang committee me, akankak, kabans'tong ya problem. Re ya'i mit me mengkapatayang, tamisansalisang rey na idungal chairman, o ibil men patrog na idungal chairman opil lukayang tung committee. Na mio wasa kee mese, eh menelek hagala duwan, aran kalangan opil yang awedelung wet. Report wet, patrowan kamilen, report kasompal yo'w, wey didan kosenet yo'me tani. Kinilang kasompal, mukosenetu'to, iror yo'w mukasompal lal, kayiu. Epanyang kango'ng e rosonmaw, on raill misuma, irail pre-school diktritikat. Kuraw, tuwya kapal en raill somot souset, pokatorla na raill ma'am tu onesap matrigin homi. Re ma government pangkak ya insawasa aleta raill ma'am kan, arail onesap kan, lapelan sawaska uyayong raill. Committee eh nan ma masan penrawot, committee pil kawit, me kak mio uyapan aleta onesap oma'am. Ew, ekak aleta onesap ni, ni amashtok olang raill, karespa mio kilial, kisertila be. Ah ew, rupil kak uyatao, tekak karesayong mon, muman export merakda taliwadet. Songkan kamakiltar ma'am monak, notri yang grade school kan taimovini, apatanakis paylawasang dan mio. Re, imen kawewo e patrowan, patrog ay tungal chairman, o eh patrowan me committee ninang kasompal kamutan kosenetu'to. O men wau bagi, eh kupurakang chaelen kak kotkyang kupuray, o utubata report me ya, kalangan kemui speaker.
Wau senator Simon, kemui senator Perez.
Kalangan koom, mrs. Speaker. Moni iban yang patro ay tungan sagratan kafen, wau ang kupuren samajal ko'ut. Muriis sabulmamupung wau. Wau nki kemui speaker, wau nki vice floor, o piyangay honorable members koros. Ilwau nki railkan me yang padan nan kalari apmenen, samajal auditoran tonpe state government. Mrs. Speaker, kabung go report wet. Itu. Report wet duet. Oleman magin kilisona ne rausis. Imen ipatrowan kasalatai, patrowan utung. Eh intentionen bill of, esutu patrayang reportu, esutu patrowan masabungan tonpeto. Menel mrs. Speaker, yi imen yang utungata. Wauta bar report wet. Utan mel, tamu ipatrowan nan billo. Na songosongan kak souse rosonmaw. Men serikan, o irailkan me, nan pitalong, nan monmoni o kinalen, men katinayan. Wet, sadikasalayang kadrail me prevention, wey itukituk sang treatment. Irayo misansal sang vice, vice chairman, netpit alaldan onesap. Magdalban katyenan billa, imen padawan kawit. Mo'in taisutan ana, aleysang irail somotkan tirakli. Magdalenkak, mo'in subsidize eh wasakan marketkan, kryaln godo aleysang wasao. Kom akda iban aleysang daramas, aktae maangir. Kungalkan me yang experience, mwey umme school launch program, ma mauur, kapal laut me. Lan sense bil puran nan por. Ayutung kamutan billo, itu report wet, esut sanjsal lele yakamaogan me, billo ban padawanin tayla. Pa sanjsal me, wey ki reporto, pralaa, patupatulangatu, reports, me kaburupurla. Nan kapurato, teikasalgana mia an reportu. Hermain, bans'ton naden laut nan report wet, wey sanjsal me kaburupurlang kampitrankak, apali ito. Eh koncern kee me mia, anzu samalaru. Ma sanjsal mmanikila reports, ani ainso me taybangan katyenan billa kawitkan na iyan. Men padonuyta mousinutang timasin pen, kaming kampit report, so uyapki isakwalu lepinial rey isaklimau sabulmanki.
Kariaman.
Kalangan chairman, kom kupurabo, monom, uyakamugut tamu ya irail ki, senator ki, me kawatanil me raill. Kom kupurabonin ponase irail ma yang, ponase kupuramun. Senator Joab. Kemui.
Kalangan kemui speaker. Kom kupur senator Perez, atrowan ikus. Amawa, itungal wangu kemui speaker, wangu vice floor leader members kan koros. Wangu irakan koros in patrankay ranu'te, nan uyalamalaban ranu'te. Mrs. Speaker, and sanjsal for the record, me yang utung melal tam sanjsal nasang chairman and kampit health. Re, imen tungalankak kawit. Mo'in leriaw. Kayiu ma kamutan kosenet wet kan pol, public or private school kan koros. Sanjsalan report me committee tuwang SPA, ah private school trailer. Kariyam mrs. Speaker. Eh berchansal me committee tuwang public market wasan, wasan netin sinumukan. Ma committee tuwang utan supplieren munge, mungan tonpe dan marketkan. Wey ki, wey bans'to isusun. Kui, kai bansito, sabung, moen, duong, schooling, pundi, public, truh, honang, limakit. Ra, ran, tuwal, taklimaw, nan uwigew. Eri, tam, eh, sainsal, sang, market riaw, desilu, kues, taishabunman, kit, pundi. Aban, etar, serikan, ran, koros, nan, tuwal, le, local. Taibil, we, we, ki, me, maang, me, eh, bang, karespa, ki, ma. Taistuk, ngang, sinume, sang, nan, senur, le, kan, tisan, yes, isan. Karaw, singgir, tu, duet, duet, er, au, realistic, on this thing, no, tra, na, apali, ki, sabatai, serikan. Yang, me, la, ay tungal, serikan, then, yoki, local food. Eri, ma, nya, kawit, sang, eh, committee, kai koros, nan, utu, peno, apali, met, kui, me kasambal. Taile, taifair, kawata, kosinadu, yo, pan, shu, nuun, apali, serikan, au, engkak, realistic, sang, met, ko, lam. Kalangan, speaker.
Langan, Senator, jawab, mawaw, eh, pan, ponel, sama, Senator Carl.
Langan, may mister speaker. Moni iban, patyang, kupurakan, ay kak, patyang, sama, masan, ning kasambal, sa karatan, kipun, kabin, waw, ma, padawan, nilang, ay tungal, wala, pang kupur, may mister speaker. One, meril, five speaker, floor leader, ay tungal, waw, toror, on, sunalai, mo, senator, akar, ay tungal, one, ki, re, anab, by, senator, kan koros. Patyang, malu, ot, okasamo, one, ki, pato, don, sammatail, auditor, me, patyang, taiban, masang rangut. May mister speaker, ikabin, go, report. Ay tungal, pepe, duet, sabunman, Senator, jawab. I, kamil, le, me, i rael, maaw, ew, me, i rael, kasambal, anana, be, mia. Katamantong, ya, kawit, in, eh, men, senator, mia, ansu, ki, samalar. Ata, ikun, nan, nan, biyang, masani, kawit, me, ban, maaw, nan, korong, men, pompe, bu, ki. Nen, ke, maaw, nan, tatangkan, magtaiban, apali. I, kabin, go, report, wasayu, me, padawan, ni, karaw, you, men, faith, riaw, para, grab, me, padawan, me, terak, terin. Kam, ban, moni, oh, achieving revenue, oh, SDA principal, me, utrong, tatagut. I, film, mia, ay tungal, peikasal, ma, ye, me, lel. Panichar, local food, me, ban, apali, nan, kosinadu. Oh, kawit, me, me, kosinadu, ot, pan, mia, utan, plan, isetukuyu, the company, is, plan, yo, anana, me. Eri, maaw, bu, ki, kawit, in, senator, Perez, magtaiban, lel, nan, kosinad, wasabukan, kak. Apul, yang, nan, kosinad, kai, te, kosanedi, me, kot, ku, kupurmaaw, akshutaka, apul. Woyaki, atai, sa ikaw, na, pato. Kukon, government, dang, apul, pan, i rael, sumotkan, porangkak, pato, duone shop, oh, apul, pan, one, set, anichar, ban, apali, nan, kosinad, maaw. Maaw, rim, sang, ah, wasa, me, yang, kasambal, ki, kai, te, kawata, kosinad, yo, eri, wala, mahal, kues, akakapul. Imen, kamil, le, me, tam, mag, mag, dhanwut. Eh, bil, peian, nan, kosinadu, ot, men, pompe, ya, nan, nan, biyang, rosonmaaw, on, mia, yang, agin, nan, konatakan, sangkan, eh, pensa, k trail. I, wasa, me, ay tungal, lem, ki, peikasal, taiban, yang, agi, apul, pan, men, ketiinae, in, on, paligan, me. Maslikin, ya, gamban, rosonmaaw, gamban, kamrae, in, but, what, eh, displeasure. Singgono, tin sangkan, magtaiban, no, at, nan restaurant. Ataiban, padawan, yang, restaurant, may, wugit, menu, pwen, yang, agi, me, aga, pumasho, se, se, ban, pakal, et. Eri, songon, wasabukan, kak, ke, nei, nei, imen, singed, nan, korong, rong, and finance, me, kosinadu, ot, manaman, sa kawala, kosinadu. Woygi, man, kate, nae, me, mia, so, te, tin sangkan, pundi, me, patyang. Eri, mo, kupurmaaw, ot, ni, eh, ban, mag, dhan, kak, sang, kalian, kak, apali. Or, a trail, and peian, tam, utan, mag, mag, pundi. Kai, te, no, tai, te, simak, la, ni, atai, ban, angat, kosinad, maaw. Kalangan, may mister speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Carl, mawaw, ang, mag, kupre, ponel, sama, five speaker.
Kalangan, speaker, ay tungal, sa karanawaw, kom kupurang, kak, puli, sabunmoni, on, tungal, me, pay, chat, nilang. Prutun, nan, wasan, mia, le, malam, ay tungal, waw, ang, kuprum, yo, on, to, floor, kamp, kapa, ay, local, senior, koros. Ay tungal, ranmaaw, on, mensang, lele, on, public auditor. Utong, to, tongkan, eh, soup, ay, le, malam, on, mensang, ot. Oh, ranmaaw, le, ngal, on, ton, ton, de, in, sok, wasa, sou, di, di, di. Speaker, mata, mata, on, me, mia, na, report, ot, in, ning kasal. I, utong, wuyabak, k trail, na, kotkyang, kat, kat, su, kola. Ya, moma, ni, taiban, apali, at. Pokapali, ni, rokan, koros, magtaiban, masani, magtaiban, promote, local food, problem, shu, ka, importan, on, school, te, nan, moni. Problem, ot, abtasang, nan, kantaskan. Dewa, sa, mka, school, in, te, in, te, li, sa, k trail, ban, mia. Sangren, papanuno, antan, to, yela. Eri, wuyabak, k trail, kak, wuyayong, oh, bisabis. Kamaw, eh, ban, in, nun, sewas, ot, eh, somot, oh, sewas, ot, kan. Oh, yang, so, me, k trail, ban, ti, alang, ma, ye, lunch program, ban, mia, ninduon, me, kasip, on, mia. Ak trail, ban, top, kounupata, mia, or, ni, eh, ban, ne, kis, top, tabali, on, rosonmaaw, me, kosinad, et, kaman, maner, sabul, me, kai, kounup, kan. Ei, nen, ngonong, kailan, to, la, nan, kosinad, li. Iman, wuyak, singkar, saras, mot, mot, speaker, kom kupur. Ni, yang, so, me, ipadu, balaw, nan, ma, broke. Ma, iban, ot, mai, nar, rest, kan, en, hotel, oh, na, bi, ay, an, iman, sang, te, sawa, poi. Eh, mia, iman, sang, sawas, sawtuk. Ton, be, eh, mon, si, bris, kala, me, iban, pato, woy, ot, ok, ok, local food, ot, om, ot, ov, using. Wasa, te, kan, rice, to, oh, mash, put, ito. Eri, moen, kosinadu, ot, pan, makit, ya, ban, masan, lang, be, rosonmaaw, school, abil, pan, makit, nan, wipugun, in, ton, de, on, rosonmaaw, on, ton, de, in, tok. Oh, i rael, kan, kayru, oh, songun, pasatokan, me, ban, moma, ki, to. Ikabin, go, report, in, report, ot, woy, kabin, gin, ang, in, bill, ot, kuno, kailan, kaman, ala. Abi, te, nan, report, akasambal, bagi, kawit, pan, report, moen, watar, ya, ki, sumay, ni, mata, mata, kai, kak, ayew, ansu, armas, te, in, kawe, wo. Eh, badolang, second, te, maning, kator, labalap, kariman. Ah, eh, bil, kupur, bu, yang, ot, atong, kita, kaski, sang, second, maning, kator, labalap, ot, atong, kita, labalap. Nan, para, grab, le, kam, kasilu, ok, pa, ay, on, robot, ot, akasambal, robot. What is, labalap? Ma, ma, iban, masan, ti, yang, eh, para, grab, payo, ayo, para, grab, mawaw, oh, ki, maning, katar, second, maning, katar, labalap, me, express, as support, on, bill, way. Ah, kupur, yang, ni, tosin, line, water, news, center, eh, badolang, dish, labalap. Ut, to, ti, yang, nan, eh, para, grab, payo, eh, badolang, witness, sang, kit, minister, bal, government, me, itawen, eh, lead, en, labalap. Moen, kasambal, kulay, me, ban, pato, ti, yang, nan, report, woygi, mata, mata, on, me. Er, ma, momo, du, ot, ban, etar, ki, la, oh, kak, kawit, wo, nan, tsong, nal, me, iro, pato, pato, lang, second, maning, katar, labalap. Om, en, oma, ay, nang, in, billo, kasal, eh, wiyabak, trail, my, tong, kalian, implementation, renkak, so, kampang, man. Trail, maang, ya, pa, trail, kounup, and, cap, your, sang, met, patola, ton, be, anana, pensa, k trail, pwen, sewasa, rosonmaaw, in, ton, wipugun, on, on. Imen, toki, ma, ay tungal, kawit, wo, ban, etar, labalap, ok, here, understanding, maning, katar, labalap, kariman, iman, kago, kailan, up, floor, report, wasabul.
Kalangan, face, sama, kupurain, ponel, sama, Senator Edwin, oh, floor leader, oh, mase, devan, eran, kapi, yang, masan. Komi, Senator Edwin.
Kapatabat, one, komi, oh, five floor, honourable member, kan, i raelkan, me, yang, patrent, kan, misin, khan, ex, man, inter, ot, oh, mas, ki, ki. May, mister speaker, moen, tam, imen, one, kapatai, yang, nan, masan, kan, report, ot, moen, moen, nan, bill, tan, kasalida, ah, moen, tam, eh, kilu, ni, eh, pato, on, wada, oh, chairman, nan, bill, ah, one, clarify, ah. Moen, eh, eh, songosan, say, eh, school, oh, iman, in. Ah, moen, imen, nan, dun, eh, sansal, maaw, me, eh. Oh, ang, mon, ni, yang, kama, kaiman, le, lang, nan, bill, ang, mon, say, say, eh, te, moh, em, with, eh, kai, di. Kai, di, su, mot, kada, oh, sapak, te, utok, watong, rael, bay, la, de. Oh, an, bil, sansal, me, i rael, kom, me, ban, yang, participate, nan, ye, pan, food, program, ot, pan, anana, register. Eri, moen, we, eh, 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 da, day, dem, on, on, trail, kaw, kaw, waw, bu, kaw, oh, su, mot, kapa, daran, ki, kan, eh, i rael, kak, ilan, ki, do, ta, ra, itik, so, ka. Oh, school, on, imon, wuni, wala, al, da, ni, ku, ku, ew, ah, mo, majitaban, tabo, nan, kosinadu, kai, di, me, eh, kat, pato, on, em. Eri, utan, moen, marketka, te, isna, kan, me, ban, eh, prepare, local food, to, watong, imon, school, de, imon, wuni. Moen, rabal, la, pan, anana, register, eh, majitaban, sabun, truh, di. Oh, mister speaker, nan, nan, korong, rong, kues, sainsal, me, kalian, school, bi, yang, pato, den, mon, wini, shu, te, yang. Ah, imen, nan, sainsal, me, holdo, taifaros, pan, eh, utan, maang, utong, trail, pensa, k trail, nan, kak, kai, kai. Ah, taifaros, pil, maang, me, kounup, tan, te, local food, eh, tok, laut, yang, moh, em, oh, ne, wiyapan. Moen, tam, eh, school, kasalida, me, resai, koun, eh, me, le, pics, eh, bansyo, ot, one, kapt, kari, and, pics, tai, maang, ya, condition, in, kapt, kari, and, pics. Te, eh, ton, wuy, eh, men, ton, wuy, on, moh, em, ka, oh, te, in, kate, em, eh, utan, eh, tang, kapal, yang, ma, eh, tang, anana, te, in, wuy. Eri, ma, armas, pan, wuyan, kaw, waw, to, ama, eri, imen, da, ababuka, pan, requires, songon, eh, kounup, ta, i rael, me, ban, koun, ta, moh, em, ban, anana, songon, ew, permit. Song, song, kai, koran, kak, watong, oh, net, ki, yang, k trail, moh, em, woi, te, i rael, kan, me, koun, ta, nan, rest. Oh, imen, clarify, to, bu, kai, te, eh, tam, sainsal, eh, me, wogin, nan, mon, moh, em, ka, illo, ka, utan, na, ban, anana, mia, eh, utak, sin, sawa, ban, nan, so, may, nes, ki, kai, di, nak, kasambal, kasambal, eh, et, kai, te, imon, school, oh, imon, wini. Ah, tam, imen, pato, on, me, sewase, somot, sawset, isutu, no, kamil, le, nan, me, ban, sewase, ka. Eri, trail, maang, ya, wajetin, moh. Aban, kai, ban, sedicate, eh, wajet, oh, eh, moh, nan, pundi, eh, na, ban, mia, moni, ban, kol, an, rael, ah, eh, sedicate, and, local, water, ka. Esitab, ban, significant, duet, eh, tam, kai, mag, kena, ban. Oh, te, in, eh, eh, te, pan, eh, tam, on, on, eh, promosining, local food, maaw, kasal. Itu, wasa, me, ikasambal, ki, eh, na, te, nan, kantaskan, kuta, kaya, ane, ki, sewa, kan, eh, pensa, k trail, di, tang, ya, kapali, on, imon, school. Me, le, tu, school, kasi, sewa, kan, bu, ki, kai, shutaka, ku, to, ne, ngrael, kan, tuwal, eh, lo, kan, eh. Ili, pato, on, eh, ili, pato, on, ki, ay, sewa, kan, bu, ki, mo, kai, di, shu, to, ut, i, ut, nga, i, i. Imen, me, kot, yo, ni, kamil, le, nan, magtaiban, implement, koyu, kai, shutaka, kawala, mahal, eh, te, eh, yang, kai, ban, nan, nan, ti, yang, ah, paramashak, ban, kuta, kuna, wosan, i, kusambal. Oh, moh, nan, patin, eh, one shop, duet, moh, nan, one, set, one shop, duet, yang, tang, kasi, yo, moen, ma, ilgan, me, itko, tok, one shop, ak, ah, taifaros, wo, woy, ki, bansyo, ot, utan, magtais, shutaka, ban, di, apali, moh, nan, light. The, create, regulation, on, light. In the near future, sabul, ma, trail, reef, resources, govern, ban, under great pressure, for, eh, songon, anan, truh. Eri, ili, pato, on, eh, oh, tam, eh, kilu, ot, songon, an, an, address, in terms of, is, me, un, cover, ban, kosinadu, ot, woy, ki, bansyo, ot, imon, school, oh, eh, imon, wini. Eri, oh, wuyapan, alal, bakan, regulation, kan, me, ban, yang, patyang, moen, wasaw, me, ban, itang, participate, di, moh, mon, alal, ban, moh, em, ki, kater. Oh, imen, mukasalida, at, eh, ro, bo, di, eh, moh, mon, kasalida, na, eh, di, ban, say, na, mon, moh, em, ka, na, eri. Majitaban, samu, ni, wat, ok, shunadu, eh, songon, apali, ke, school, oh, kalangan, speaker.
Kalangan, mawaw, Senator Edwin, ay, ban, ponel, si, Senator Simona.
Kalangan, speaker, moni iban, patyang, i raelkan, sainsal, on, report, koyu, ay, sa karatan, waw, kabin, ki, yang, kupuran, den, ilap, ranwut, sainsal, on, ban, ban, trail. Kapur, eto, wasakset, yang, patyang, sabul, momi, sa karatan, waw, on, mensang, nan, ranwut. One, komi, five speaker, floor leader, honourable member, post, corusian. Imen, wiyati, i rong, katam, ni, on, momo, du, ot, nan, ten, displeasure, itra, laptop, resolution, yo, me, ban, i rael, magtaiban, masani, netbit, wasa, karos, mer, ban, wasan, teikaut, ni, schoolkan, nimowuning, on, me, fit, local food, serve, local food, engkak, wuya, eh, i rael, yo, me, engkak, kesen, men. Engkak, department, nan, aranti, on, kaw, wuya, assessment, yo, de, study, weng, kak, apali, i rael, magtaiban, masani, songon, i raelkan, me, kak, apali, somot, sawset. Eh, ma, bangkak, i rael, me, k trail, masani, apal, pan, eh, local food, na, wasa, karos. Imen, wiyati, weng, kak, wuya, i rong, kataman, magtaiban, laptop, de, resolution, yo, eh, aranti, the department, of, aranti, on, kaw, wuya, study, de, assessment, yo, porang, kak, apali, yang, i raelkan, magtaiban, kasalida, nan, kai, ma, sa, ni, report, me, itan, in, ning, kosinadu. Kalangan, speaker.
Langan. Na, iban, ponel, si, floor leader, masalar, me, ban, yang, masan, iban, ponel, si, floor leader, pungkak.
Kalangan, speaker, kumail, kupur, ay tungal, waw, sabhal. I, kawit, kan, koros, mo, char, char, kailan, kak, kris, ng, tumasin, pan, report, zap. Imen, jigar, kita, i rael, bu, ki, yang, patiran, kororo, i, pat, patuwan, report, shu, nuun, patu, le. Abi, it, imen, kate, at, eh, i rael, witness, ko, eh, i, uchung, me, lel, kosinadu, ot, bu, ki. Eh, kage, laga, pensa, k trail, in, tu, na, trail, maang, eh. Speaker, kosinadu, ot, eh, timing, bu, ki. Me, ir, plan, me, ir, sama, trail, food, security, plan, yo, me, implemented, there. Ipadu, on, tam, eh, bu, ki, nan, korong, rong, mia, wul, ya, ben, way, me. Uchung, kosinadu, bu, ki, plan, ah, engkak, sainsal, bank, promail, me, plan, ot, ang, mon, chang, ot, oh, ay, so, ku, sel, du, kachala. Eri, yon, ne, kong, kong, and, pato, yang, raelkan, me, apali, plan, ot, bu, utan, me, ban, sewas, maaw, kosinadu. Eh, pat, patuwan, report, shu, nuun, wuy, isil, la, nan, report, ay, sa karagita, me, bu, eh, shu, zima, sa, na, ah, men, kupre, yang, me, kosinadu, ot, eh, utan, eh, timing, bu, me, ir, plan, me, ban, sewas. Ay, it, imen, sa karagita, speaker, kalangan.
Ban, po, na, si, kamogit, me, miye, er, tai, lan, rotungti, maasen, ban, ira, wood, tai. Bo, di, kamogit, me, miye, ro, solar, maasen, ban, ira, wood, tai, ban, po, na, si, kamogit, me, miye, horos, mo, utung, tai, lan, rotungti, maasen, ban, maasen, i, ei.
Ei.
O, maasen, isho, kamogit, poi, ta, tai, rotungti, er, maasen, ban, report, horos, mo, utung, tai, si, Sabulma, kita, report, maasen, i, ei.
Ei.
O, maasen, isho, kamogit, poi, ta, tai, Sabulma, kita, report, number, reapki, isak, tuaw, reapki, isak, walu, la, ben, ya, reapki, isak, lemau. Miye, to, report.
Standing, GMP, report, number, reapki, isak, tuaw, la, reapki, lemau, me, pit, floor motion, on diagnostic center, San, Sanse, Sabulma, GMP, in health.
Chairman, Ned.
Kalangan, kamuy speaker, eh, chwal, sakaran, wa, usapal, onggin, kamuy, eh, speaker, floor leader, honorable Senator, San. Pil, brand, on, ki, kat, do, do, state public, editor, honorable Eric Paul. Men, pil, brand, pada, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, kusinu, ma, o, patuan, wia, ta, kamogit, tai, lan, wia, lam, lam, ki, standing, kam, the report, number, reapki, isak, tuaw, la, ben, ya, reapki, lemau, o, Sabulma, ki.
Sanjalm, me, mir, kamogit, o, mir, career man, ban, kamogit, o, koros, mo, utung, kamogit, o, maasen, i, ei.
Ei.
O, maasen, isho, kamogit, eh, poi, ta, miye, maasen, ban, Chairman, Ned.
Kalangan, kamuy speaker, wa, usapal, eh. Iban, patro, an. Pada, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, o, sakar, ki, kat, kat, me, pit, floor motion, and, me, pit, ta, diagnostic center. Kayu, diagnose, kusinu, to, miye, er, karyao, kusinu, to, KPS, er, nan, wia, lam, lam, and, bar, menekir, wia, lam, lam, keisak, and, health summit. Kezilu, eh, in, government, in, India, the way, in India, men, sawas, ki, tipusho, eh, tipusho, ban, yang, patre, tipusho, trikan, nan, diagnostic center, wood, ye, MRI. Eh, esan, saler, me, MRI, yo, on, patar, India, and, patro, an, ta, patro, an, eh, president, in FSM, o, kaon, and, kemba, and, ro, sohose, ma, o, social affairs, and, FSM, nyanso, me, FSM, president, ban, kat, yang, nan, Sabulma, state visit, o, way, in India. Eh, me, te, te, er, mo, number, yao, me, pit, pil, tipusho, me, kayu, pay, laut, nan, buang, ban, patro, nan, diagnostic center, wood, my, Mr. Speaker, honorable Senator, San, pil, misin, eh, o, Sabulma, ma, Sabulma, ma, il, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, pil, wia, insin, song, silir, o, pil, di, ar, da, pil, welen, sawas, o, pil, misin, eh, sang, umon, misin, eh, me, KPS, eh, pil, wia, wia, ngar, kamuy, my, Mr. Speaker, honorable Senator, San. Me, latest state of art, and, MRI, me, shod, ban, lem, lem, pen, de, masak, and, sohose, and, tor, galon, nan, por, yo. The two view, ma, ketay, koros, maangi, ma, ketay, lap, shod, kan, kak, eh, eh, latest state of art, me, di, er, keta, San, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, shod, eh, ba, salawew, eh, me, shod, ban, kamasa, bo, di, kol, on, nan, two view. Eh, my, Mr. Speaker, dami, di, er, tar, San, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, o, na, na, well, ban, floor, floor motion, wood, million, eh, point, silu, CIF, o, ah, MRI, mi, patro, an, patro, an, sakar, ki, eh, eh. Kamit, eh, ban, sakar, ki, kat, kat, me, te, wili, eh, ban, and, and, we, kan, o, nan, pinin, ko, kusinu, to, keisake, eh, me, ken, to, pe, me, diagnostic center, wood, ban, kak, er, ta, tok. Men, dami, misin, riao, CT scan, o, MRI, ban, kak, er, ta, tok, shod, ban, sang, ni, mon, par. Iban, patro, an, it, met, o, Senator, Lepe, Anthony, and, pil, patro, an, sakar, ki, ta, ma, korongorongo, yawi, eh, korongorongo, yawi, tu, ne, isak, ono, o, irail, wili, eh, ban, sang, FSM, patro, ta, to, le, le, kid, rail, o, wili, eh, ban, ke, ben, aw, irail, ka, pil, sakar, ki, ta, o, Sabulma, ma, kamit, me, eh, koros, ngong, ngong, ki, o, pat, patre, diagnostic center, wood, and, miye, ta, bo, di, and, kak, and, kat, kala, de, kosore, la, seilok, o, maslik, seilok, o, Philippine, America, away, o, na, nan, ban, diagnostic center, the MRI, the CT scan. Ah, iban, patro, an, it, met, o, lukayang, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, do, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, o, Senator, San, and, patre, o, kaita, eh, chwal, a, le, pe, standing, kam, the report, number, reapki, isak, tuaw, la, ben, ya, reapki, isak, lemau, kalangan, Mr. Speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Ned, full, KPS, ban, report. Kamu, Senator Simon.
Speaker, kalangan, kamuy speaker, kosa, pal, eh, chwal, sakaratan, waw. Speaker, eh, men, nyang, patro, eh, chwal, chairman. I, kabingki, chairman, report, or, lap, report, ma, me, wia. Up. Dam, eh, chairman, me, ma, san, i, akasom, pal, bo, di, to, ed, kuburan, aramas, o, ma, o, chora, pal, ita, tok, ma, o. Up, kamogit, me, miye, eh, wia, wi, da, po, kamit, yang, ka, tu, o, Dr. Health Services, Bombay, state, to, di, ar, da, ya, umon, kusinu, to, me, Bombay, state, less major, kamanala, me, pit, ka, kau, dan, diagnostic center, nan, Bombay, eh, mo, ni, Bombay, po, nan, kusinu, to, miye, timeline, ka, miye, eh, eh, yosa, nan, timeline, ko, me, o, lo, eh, moni, Bombay, tak, po, di. Speaker, ni, wa, o, kal, kara, eh, imin, sakar, ki, ta, me, sota, wasakis, momon, desig, ne, nip, patro, set, desig, ne, wasak, set, eh, up, say, momon, ta, tok, yo, wia, eh. Eh, wasam, ikasambalgi, Dr. Kamit, o, chairman, o, drong, kamit, me, miye, tor, bu, ban, kap, to, lo, me, pit, ta, kan, me, miye, eh. Umon, miye, assessment, report, yo, ko, lo, eh, me, pit, pinio, patro, la, tok, ya, umon, wasa, ma, ta, tok, nan, wasa, me, wia, wasan, eh, Siro, sab, eh, kay, de, Siro, extra, ya, eh, so, to. Eh, iman, patro, an, dam, eh, Bombay, eh, Health Services, udan, nan, an, sawas, out, ta, tok, wood. Kasom, pal, pant, diagnostic center, wood, speaker, o, lo, po, man, sura, mong, tay, be, kasalay. Ban, center, wood, ban, miye, eh, step, ban, udan, irodi, to, ul, pa, ketar, sumo, up, tay, ban, ketar, la, sumo, niye, tai, maangi, patro, an, du, umon, ta, mer, Sabulma, kita, do, le, na. Center, wood, me, ban, miye, me, woy, haramas, ban, sul, ah, nan, eh, patro, la, away, Philippine, de, India, buangka, kol, ang, kade, de, kaba, salay, de, lung, ta, mer, Sabulma, ki. Ime, kasom, pal, lang, so, wood, nintu, ed, ma, chairman, report, di, me, miye, er, wasa, me, men, sawas, kita, misin, buka, o, pil, willing, rang, ka, ketar, to, sam, rail, depression, kan, rail, to, depression, kan, ban, ka, kata, kata, tok, wood, nintu, ed, at, tai, kap, kata, diagnosis, center, nan, Bombay, state. Eh, chairman, kom, kubur, up, udan, ni, melil, ni, ar, lap, say, git, o, me, kot, wia, wi. Patro, me, wi, wia, wi, up, say, ta, tok, concrete work, me, wia, wi, eh, udan, ni, patro, ki, po, nintu, ed, tu, ban, o, kan, me, wia, wi, so, ma, ngora, ma, o, umon, miye, wo, ban, o, imin, par, wood, me, kot, ban, miye, er, up, nil, to, met, o, kus, ban, wat, de, lak, kap, bal, so, to, me, kot, ma, ngoy, kat, kade, de, me, concrete. Eh, ya, chairman, kom, kubur, kom, kubur, up, i, kam, il, lem, me, kamit, yang, ta, o, pil, ban, nan, kawit, and, do, less major, wood, po, i, kam, il, lem, me, wia, interest, in, Bombay, state government, o, aramas, in, Bombay, center, wood, ta, tok, eh, kalangan, kamit, my, speaker.
Maow, Senator Simon, ek, ma, kuburain, po, na, sama, Senator Carl.
Kalangan, my, Mr. Speaker, eh, chwal, wa, usapal, ban, kubur, yo, mo, yo, ban, kubur, kan, koros. Iman, patro, an, day, kabungki, report, me, miye, bo, di, kawit, kubur, tai, o, ta, tok, kasambal, wood, kabungki, kawit, in, Senator Simon, sanjalm, report, la, sin, para, grab, keter, yon, la, sin, para, grab, patuan, me, Bombay, bil, aw, yawi, sawas, in, National Government. Eh, wasad, me, kasambalki, may, ban, kawit, and, report, met, eh, asa, ma, ketay, ban, Sabulma, kita, report, wood. Dictator, pil, ban, yang, er, aw, yawi, eh, National Government, anjewet, kemban, ro, sohose, ma, ma, yawi, National Government. Eh, yat, tu, ed, ma, kawit, miye, yawa, ban, o, pinin, tu, so, buka, po, kay, te, chi, wo, ki, lam, me, kot, chi, wa, tai, lam, ban, puli, kalang, National Government, ma, ban, buka, o. Magtay, suka, kap, a, kita, te, te, kan, koros, ma, ka, kapali, at, ah, nan, wood. Ta, dami, sanjalm, lan, report, pil, ban, wia, kapal, am, ketay, eh, i, tai, er, kapa, dapat, aw, yaman, ala, kawit, in, chairman, kalangan, my, Mr.
Kalangan, Senator Carl, ira, kasambal, yo, man, o, nan, kawit, and, report, ni, eh, pil, one, one, tak, nintu, ed, Senator Carl, eh, maasen, yata, o, ne, yang, magtai, ban, kongkong, National Government, day, o, resolution, and, kau, napata, resolution, ban, ban, pa, ketar, report, sanjalm, me, report, Sabulma, tai, report, eh, ya. Iman, patre, ira, ma, sanjalm, eh, Senator Carl. Kamuy, Senator Ned.
Kalangan, kamuy speaker, kalangan, kamuy, o, chairman, and, kamit, yang, moni, bo, di, ira, ma, 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 san, yata. Hayit, kawit, sang, Sabulma, ma, Sabulma, tai, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma. Mi, ching, in, November, isak, tuaw, glag, isak, glag, riao, o, glag, silu, alep. St. Luke's Medical Center, mi, ching, o, o, president, CEO, in St. Luke Medical Centers, ye, Dr. Dennis Serrano, o, yang, a, ki, eh, chwal, laba, laba, kay, me, pil, parang, kid, rail, ni, mon, ok, to, pe, rebel, Lel, Re, me, credit, se, call, Lel, Bill, Re, kabin, a. O, dami, sanjalm, ta, nan, wia, lam, lam, wo, eh, St. Luke, kak, kalapongki, kawata, eh, Medical Center, patro, an, yang, tipusho, wi, o, chon, ta, tok, kan, apali, tipusho, buka, o, pil, kak, yang, patre, eh, eh, kubur, me, kuburain, speaker, o, kuburan, pinin, ko, kusinu, to, keisake, eh, pal, tar, ma, ha, executive, mel, el, kabin, a, me, more. Ali, al, kawit, chili, me, chairman, and, kamit, yang, moni, pil, maasen, yata, men, pur, pur, al, lang, tre, FSM, up, report, sanjalm, me, miye, er, my, Mr. Speaker, honorable Senator, Carlos, trai, al, kak, day, wia, de, Sabulma, tai, diagnostic center, swaran, ah, sawas, in, FSM, men, patro, an, sakar, ki, ta, kuburan, kabin, a, eh, tar, po, ten, RFP, you, when, wia, wi, da. Buangka, kan, robot, ma, shod, eh, you, pal, me, ban, in, ngi, yang, and, pil, wia, yang, kid, rail, eh, POT, build, operate, or, turnover, at, the transfer, turnover, mer, ing, galap, ta, tok, ki, eh, ira, wood, eh, pil, ma, o, kan, kai, la, leadership, and, government, ah, nan, eh, you, ben, eh, ni, melil, iman, patro, an, face, speaker, and, eh, o, kabin, a, kai, lan, ngong, at, ah, o, ekis, mur, se, mag, sang, eh, anjewet, ay, met, iman, patro, an, sakar, ki, ta, buangka, apali, kubur, ma, me, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, ro, sohose, ma, pil, apali, ira, wood, eh, eh, my, Mr. Speaker.
Kalangan, chairman, kalangan, o, i, patro, an, day, ira, wood, buk, tai, ban, kaman, at, report, wood, o, id, soto, wasakis, ban, pa, ketar, la, eh, iman, patro, an, resolution, ban, ban, katar, kuburan, less major, eh, may, eh, udan, ni, kuburan, kamit, yang, de, kat, kat, wood, a, resolution, and, ka, kau, napata, buang, itan, kuburan, less major, o, kongkong, and, the, cap, o, o, way, Philippine, de, National Government, eh, sanjalm, nan, report, soto, identification, you, ma, report, ban, pil, pa, ketar, tilang, FSM, National Government, eh, i, kas, kasalay, di, tai, ira, wood, tai, kat, lan, nan, ira, o, motion, and, rotungti, maasen, me, eh, kasalay, tai, ira, buka, kai, lan, kubur, ma, konyang, ta, tok, and, kak, and, tai, la, ab, no, magtai, ban, wia, kai, lan, kaman, at, resolution. Tai, kat, lan, kapali, at, resolu, eh, report, koros, mo, utung, kamogit, o, maasen, i, ei.
Ei.
O, maasen, isho, kamogit, poi, ta, tai, rotungti, er, maasen, ban, report, horos, mo, utung, tai, si, Sabulma, kita, report, maasen, i, ei.
Ei.
O, maasen, isho, kamogit, poi, ta, tai, maasen. Atap, the, report, number, reapki, isak, tuaw, la, ben, ya, reapki, isak, lemau, eh, eh, report.
Standing, GMP, report, number, reapki, isak, la, isak, lemau, me, pit, Governor Communication, number, still, ki, one, isak, la, isak, lemau, San, Sabulma, GMP, Public Works, Transportation, and Communication.
Kalangan speaker, do, na, iban, yang, kudai, ay, met, kian, ki, eh, kap, o, ma, ban, kubur, sa, mat, re, kor, denila, sati, nikar, kara, ki, yang, patre, Sabulma, ma, ma, kubur, yang, di, er, mon, kusinu, to. Proton, al, chamber, onggin, kamuy, face, door, or, eh, honorable Senator, San, horos, eh, iman, pada, Sabulma, ma, kamit, yang, Public Works, Transportation, and Communication, lap, ki, nikar, kara, kay, lan, kiti, lan, maasen, ban, communication.
Keryamen.
Report, number, reapki, isak, la, ben, ya, isak, lemau.
Keryamen. Sanjalm, maow, kamogit, and, chairman, koros, mo, utung, kamogit, o, maasen, i, ei. O, maasen, isho, kamogit, eh, poi, ta, tai, ban, kati, lan, maasen, ban, miye, maasen, ban, chairman, la, ban.
Kalangan speaker, kesa, pal, eh, chwal, wa, ban, kubur, face, floor, o, honorable Senator. Kabu, iman, sabina, communication, man, de, ilip, tu, one, isak, he, la, ben, ya, isak, lemau, may, tal, long, communication, report. Reapki, isak, la, ben, ya, isak, lemau. Silhong, eh, recommendation, wood, po, di, Antonio John, and, we, I, am, in Board of Directors, o, Bombay Utility Corporation. Mr. John, anjewet, we, have, vice president, o, Ed, of Operation, o, Sabulma, Tai, Bank of FSM, o, way, Bombay. O, Sabulma, ta, la, wia, korongorongo, eh, me, pit, na, meni. Eh, yon, korongorongo, se, luk, office, in, kabin, a, o, wian, to, office, in, kabin, a, ye, A, Chi, A, Chi, pil, kasalayda, Sabulma, support, o, kamele, le, yang, kamit, me, rak. Achi pil kasaleta sabul mer support, o kamelele yang committee, me recommendation me sang reng kabina. Kameleleme, namini anti-collaborations loud, ong nanpilyan tanking, o erak wia sawas loud ong, o trail PUC. Achi pil kasaleta me, sangni recommendation me kabina wia, sansal me, namini manet pil wia, a men boardin. Boardin bilangayon nan eh administration and John Esar, 2016 dan 2021. Sabil tola bil karonge wuya ben, Achi office, me committee party, and provide police clearance. Police clearance koros me provide, eh sansal me, namini metet subra angki, balanit etip swatu. Silong karorong sabil suwang, PUC CEO, the general manager, o sabul mer staff. PUC pil kasaleta res support ong namini, swatre sansal me, namini pil youngster talk, board of directors, and job samlar. Sangnan record metete, magin pit requirement ong, and wiala board in PUC. Namini koros and yangki puitan, yang eyo, yangki eyo company me, puitan den PUC. Dami kamelele pen, o jutin, namini bukat, o witness bukat. Sabul momu committee BWTC, bil tola o recommend, etilab wut, kailan sabul man kita report wut. Etir nan tato.
Kalangan chairman, weki kawewa, dakapisans standing up the report, yep kiri isek lebinyar isek limaw. Yate masan open report, kamui Senator Carl.
Kailan my Mrs Speaker, itungal wosabal bangkubro yo muiyo, bangkubro kan koros. Itungal sakar misit, lei padun an damatasein, jodai, tungalengki sakar misit. Ong report wut, eyo chetan filipil me mualwut kin sabul manki. Weki kanenen, it filipil daaniral kan me pan, kat padun an port kan, and kak kipe, chon wey unsek. Harri, ikasempalki irawat. Ong, namini manet, isutepaduan ne, sawiyat chon men yawe, mah madelenim, tabu kolonia se, kechi. Ay kameleleme ireo bilikin sawase kupratai. Kabkanenene tiniraikan ma bapali, sawamatai kaur men, and and yangaki chon wey koros. Ay itungaliren kalalabak moong chairman, kalangan my Mrs Speaker.
Won chairman aban sabangay banpona sama Senator Edward, me pil kawata lelima kawit.
Kalangan kuprum yo, us speaker, no moawi, men padawan eyo motion and regenti masan open irawat, imimen padawan. Kuryamen. Men padawan eyo motion kailan regenti masan open kuport, imimen padawan.
Komkubro sansal me mia kalalabak you, me sansal sang Senator Carl. And may mayama committee, sansal me manakapwe, eh chowan men yawe. Kamui chairman laben.
Kalangan speaker, kesabala itungal waow. Manakap manet, wia men madelenim, o kosan ibutet. O eh sabilita mila kolonia, abu wia chon melele wein madelenim. O, manakap met, pil, kasaleta ujut, ma alati kupran legislation. Aban chon ne kak koros.
Kalangan. Kalangan, kail, na kamui Senator, eh R2.
Hey kalangan, kalanganang kuprami, Mrs Speaker, kesakaratangan waow kapatcha pat patiyan sabul momu. Naelil waongin kamui vice floor, yamay honorable members kan koros, o koros me piri yang kail. May, iran kawit yo imen, padawan tanan reportin, nabit nomination, Mrs Speaker. May, yang gunkoneang, yang gun, eh kak sansal, mo iti taka isnekei merabang gun wuli yanti. Is merabang gun wuli yanti, we yang gun pil, yang gun pil sansal, aramas merawuli yanti yo. We toh, gun palongalangatan an tato akin eh port. A imimen, imimen kapatcha yang ireka, and yang gun sansal is merabang gun wuli yanti. Eh namini eh, reportin namini kay, magtae bil, eh paduan kamanalar, report eh swatre gun sansal eh is merak, eh gun wuli yanti. O mare irel reappointed. Kalangan imimen tache yang kupport kesempalwut.
Sansal is merawala kabipan wuli yan ma ban puita. Men pagitatai lan kumbal malep naso. Laben standing up the report, yep kiri isek, lebinyar isek limaw, ibanpona sama Senator, the chairman laben.
Kalangan speaker, kesabala itungal waow. Toki, kailang abandela report, and rupto, ong report, menyamabaw yani, ong sette the private. Abandela ong naksisit.
Speaker. Kamui chairman and chair go.
Kalangan speaker, atunggi kawitin chairman and public work. Ketae ban naga niro portu, eh yezanka kuyawi, kailan kare sametro portu, ong committee. Eh, kail papretu, and sir Senator.
Kalangan, eh Senator laben, magtae bangkabandela, sumekut may bangkaku yank report. Magtae bangkabrowan committee, mayka taik sang yo, kawewa tama, iti topuka wuli yanto private, the public. Ma miyare puitan, kesodo puitan. Harri, may appropriate motion ang kupurpurlang committee. Very, when appropriate motion ang kaburbulang committee, or may report or then special committee, uh, special session vote. Hey, bye.
Mr. Speaker, but not bad, I can begay senator Laben, the chairman, mobile committee. We're gonna have an attack, say, by the cock, yahui, menai. I know, and we got a motion manya, and got wood. We get a song, eh, Kapantala, oh, we get a, eh, kaburbulang committee, or onkak report back, non session vote.
Chancellor Mao, Kamogut, sang vice speaker, we're gonna be a career man, and Kamogut, eh, ban bonus, chorus mood, Kamogut, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, Kamogut, payta, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, kaburbulang, uh. Committee in PWTC, on it one kawe it, manya, runkakan report, and then special session vote. Tail cutla motail, we ban play, bonus chief clerk, meh to report.
Standing committee report number Ryopki, Ryesekola, and Ryeseklimao, mapet, legislature bill number Ryopki, Sista Triola, and Ryeseklimao, sang saumni committee in finance.
Chancellor, my report, ban report, committee in finance, ban report, committee ban bonus, some of my chairman and money, Senator Carl.
Kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker. Money ban, patha, some committee money, and kaka, say, bali, say, karanwa, bank, kubromyo, bank, purakan chorus. Niya so de, men, jungalan, kiya so mau, kasa mau, ongki, get to, padu don, sang magtail, commission, and PTA, men, wa, karakarak, money ban, ya, Kamogut, tellin kalk, bonus, eh, kiya, ulapulap. Kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker, itungalwa, say, bali, bank, kubromyo, bank, purakan chorus, niwa, wa, karakarak, pada, some committee money, yo, Kamogut, malwood. Kalangan, kuya kaburki, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Libynyar Rysek limao.
Career man. Chancellor, Kamogut, and chairman, and money, chorus mood, Kamogut, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, Kamogut, payta, be a Masanabe, Chairman Carl.
Kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker, money ban, capeset, niyara lap, Kamodang, Senate, kasumbal, what, amen. Patha, some committee money, yo, kapenggi, yang Senator Edmund, Senator Irons, we're be, sapul, mara, kawe it, meh. Kawe itata, tatoa, kasumbalwood, niyara lap. Standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Ryesek, Libynyar Ryesek limao, itan, Kamodang, Senate, Ryopki, Sisa Triola, Libynyar Ryesek limao, begi. When money you, when kaka manamanta, when kaka, bali, uyawita, cup, and perisi you, nan bill, meh, ban, katake, bene. Bali, meh, alla, patiyo, oh, katake, ela, kote, bill, nan bill, katake, ela, wasa, meh, kosan laut, pati, patiyo, mey ra il, chon, kosan wo. Meh, paasana, ra, jungal, desamra ra il, ye iasen, nan ranakan, ye iwa, sao. Very, nan tatoakin committee, eh, katierak, tam, nan parakan, moe, ew benen, tatoa, daptan, nan bungan, Bombay state government, or net district government. Ninduan, committee, eh, angar, kawe it, inirailkan, meh, uliyan to, sang magtai, kamban money, kamban DNI, the office in DNI. Oh, net district government, kawe itata, meh, meya, when money you, meh, kamanamanta, or meh, wa, pati, no one, talari, nan, one akit. Nine silikit, patosang, net district government, nine silikit, patosang, Bombay state government, ninduan kamanamanta, an malwood. Nan matulin, aiso, meh, money, kamanamanta, lataranwood, kapal laut, meya, wasao, meya, chon, kosan wo, meh, bill. Lo yang kapal, niyara isong, and kote, bill, wo, niya, so, meh, koto, laut, lapaga, meya. Meya, meh, bill, kapinsale, dala, or committee, kasumbal, ke meh, alil, tirail, kasumbal, meh, chon, kosan, wood, lo yang. That chon, kosan, wood, lo yang. Oh, nan kawe it, in Senator Edmund, Senator Irons, when money you, when kaka, kamanamanta. When kaka, kawata, peris koyak, you, meh, ban, ma awong, kaiden, the chon, wasao, apmen, Bombay, pon, meh, bill, can mama, iki, wasao. Niyara lap. Chancellor, nan report, when kala, isinen, riakid, and kaka, pati, yang money, meh, meyer. When kaka, bali, yata, peris koyak, wood, ninduan estimate, oh, kawe it, in tatoa, meh, patosang, angar, sang magtai, office in DNI. Men, kamelele, meh, puran, malwood, ong, sang, tatoa, kasumbalwood. Malwood, yakin, kasumbal, kisan, awon, nan, kosanakan. So, the big, asal, ban, meya, ong, report, kalangan, kaka, kella, motail, wasa, will, mangita, report. Ay, kawe it, or a report, meh, men, baki, ta, committee, wasa, meh, isatelel, ay, luka, kubrakan, meh, lel, kawe it, in. Kamba, kaba, eh, Senator Edmund, or Senator Irons, iran, kaka, pati, yang, eh, capeset, orala, meh, tabiata, kalangan.
Speaker. Kalangan, Chairman Carl, we're gonna capeset, and report, Kamui, Senator Edmund.
Kalangan, Speaker, uh, if I need, ma, vice, may, can, be, a, 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 a.
Senator, that one, heal floor, ong, vice speaker, meh, can.
Speaker, ay, tungal, sakaranwa, say, bali. Bank, kubromyo, floor, ano, vote, senators, chorus, o, chorus. Kaiden, we're be, in chance, huliking, sakala, apatun, nan, ay, tungal, balwa. Abni experience, Speaker, alepak, silu, ibatola, wasa wood. Niya, itukutuk, bill, patola, money, eskula, ni, anso, koyak, atauli, silu. Abulil, nan, moe, meh, met, Speaker, uyama, tamata, laudre, ni, anso, mey, patola, kaiden, anso, on, atam, aur, tabi, la, bak. Apkote, bill, lapuk, aramas school, saal. Yana, le, brasis, kote, we, to, usuk, sakala, ay, tungal, kama, kado. Ananani, school, mekoto, anananen, money, songkan, songpar, tava, aramas, puka, di, momom. You, chung, meh, lel, prosecute, man, Speaker, sin, te, waw, den, patota. Winnet, nun, kalangan, ong, Bombay, sang, kawa. Standing, wasa, tutel, mailan, wasa wood, no, we, son, in Bombay, pon, tau, wood. Mailan, wasakan, no, we, toto, no, we, saw, sepan, Bombay, lela, school, songkan, wasan, muto. Um, tirail, armasin, winnet, kan, an, ku, kawat. Iman, baki, list ledger, kayso, ke, wood, and kabur, kalangan, kamanala, on, money wood, wa, bali, yata, peris wood. If I, we, eh, plus, eh, o, legacy, and eleven, list ledger. Ayay, tungal, sakaran, sawas, met, iman, baki, bank, kubromyo, door, porantat, kaburlang, nanit, yavala, net, to Senator Edmund. Kalangan, man, Speaker.
Kalangan, Vice Speaker, Vice Speaker, ma, war, a, yield, floor, wrong, Senator Edmund, Senator Edmund.
Kalangan, Speaker, kung, kubura, money, ban, yang, pato, and kaka, pati, yang, sartang, wa, kana, meh, kumu, uliyan, tiya, momot, what, o, sakardi. Nan, moali, tungal, sartang, on, kumu, Speaker, Vice, floor, o, unemployment, best, kang, chorus. O, if I, kana, pati, yang, tenan, yalan, laman, misang, rangwood. Eh, kapenggi, report, kasilil, meh, uh. Chairman in finance, o, Vice Speaker, plak, den, ma, masanita, pato, one. Kapenggi, yang, to, momot, and, we, kuburamay, paan, Chancellor, langit, sang, matkula, we, ki. Utan, chon, wasao, anana, sawas, laut. Ay, magara, ta, iman, pakita, momot, one, kaka, sapul, man, kita, report, or, chungti, masin, pe, kita, Chairman.
Chairman. Chancellor, meh, meyer, motion, tail, and kakan, regentiti, Masanabe, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Libynyar Rysek limao. Chorus mood, Kamogut, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, Kamogut, payta, chorus mood, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Libynyar Rysek limao, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, Kamogut, payta, day, sapul, man, kita, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Libynyar Rysek limao. Meh to report.
Standing committee report number Ryopki, Ryesekola, and Ryeseklimao, mapet, legislature bill number Slupki, Ryesekla, and Ryeseklimao, sang, Sisabumi, committee in finance.
Sang, momo, dream, and bonus, Chairman Carl.
Kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker, itungalwa, say, bali, bank, kubromyo, bank, purakan chorus. Wa, wa, karakarak, Kamogut, malwood, kalangan, kaka. Katia, nan, Masanabe, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Libynyar Rysek limao.
Chairman. Chancellor, Kamogut, meh, meya, we're gonna be a career man, bye, ban, bonus, chorus mood, Kamogut, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, we're gonna, Kamogut, eh, payta, day, ban, katia, nan, Masanabe, meya, Masanabe, Kamui, Chairman.
Kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker, itungalwa, say, bali, bank, kubromyo, bank, purakan chorus. Niyara lap, my Mrs. Speaker. Standing committee report, when, itan, Kamodang, Senate, Slupki, Ryesek, Libynyar Ryesek limao, begi, malwood, and kaka, kaburata. Ananan, sang magtai, malung, kubungilile, and win, Bombay, meh, lel, malung, kubungisap. Ong, nan, sang, marail, ta, ray, tungal, pote, no, malwood, kamanalar. Chancellor, marangwood, tail, katia, nan, water, taiwan, sang magtai, DNI, money, in tatoakin, parwood. Very, kampadodo, meh, bill, yang, aki, malung, kubungan, malung, kubungilile, a, meh, lel, malung, kubungisap. Sapul, marail, ra, il, tungal, money, meh, payta, o, anana, ben, runkak, to, ang, gila, o, ananankan, meh, kasumbal, yang, ra il, nan. Karongrong, no, some, committee, money, pati, yang. Malung, kubungisap, meh, lel, director, and, malung, kubungilile, and win, Bombay. Chief clerk, the principal clerk, and, malung, kubungisap, o. Principal judge, meh, pati, yang, karong, karongrong, wood, nipain, kabura. Chancellor, meh, committee, sodeluke, song, kubung, the principal judge, and pati, yang, kabur, ma, meh, sapul, man, kiya, pati, yang, committee, oh, kawe it, tatoa, wood. When money, meh, payta, nan, ra, il, tungal, budget, kala, banen, silikit, sama, nan, money wood. Kala, silinen, wale, keden, kaka, kado, rola, wa, bali, anananin, selok, we, kayaan, and song, kubung, o, ra, il, to, tatoan, kan. Pati, yang, mo, ew benayu, mekin, meya. Oh, malung, kubungan, pati, yang, nan, win, Amer, kama, ni, university you, madang, ki, National Judicial College. Tatoa, wood, nan, bar, chorus, malung, kubungan, pati, yang, ninduan, song, kubungan, yakin, pati, yang, pili, ra, isong, kubungan, oh. Getla, wasao, ninduan, eh, kayaan, kan, mekin, meya, sang, university, wo. Pati, yang, met, my Mrs. Speaker. Ninduan, kana, na, din, money wood. We're be, bali, you, meh, adang, ki, Pacific Judicial Council. Mekin, pato, one, when money, sang, bank, kampak, to, se, se, kumalung, kubungan, meh, lel, malung, kubungan, ilile, and win, Bombay, yang, kayaan, kan. When money, merabak, meh, pato, one, kawe it, and kaka, pato, to, si, selok, kasumbalwood, kala, le, mekin. Duan, money, chorus, ban, patosang, sawas, meh, pato, to, bank, kampak, to, kene, nandong, abas, yang, Supreme Court, and a, bali, yang, State Court, ka. Pati, yang, met, when kala, silinen, silikit. Tuwo, kune, sekwalu, and kaka, pato, yang. Ban, all others, or, onkak, bali, we, ananan, kan, meh, malung, kubungisap. Jungalan, ki, nan, lu, lan, DNI, and patet, wood, meh, lel. Anan, bukat. Kasumbal, yang, malung, kubungisap. Ninduan, ra il, nan, nan, DNI, and bilpati, yang, kayaan, kan, meh, Bombay, and bilpati, ki, yang, we, jakan, meh, lel, ha, piba. Eh, training, and irailkan, mekin, a, bali, money, kan, oh, sang, tatoa, jakan. Ay, meh, la, yang, committee, eh, utungata, kawe it, meh, meyer, sang, director, and, malung, kubungilile. Principal cha, principal clerk, o, ninduan, principal judge, eh, kabur, ma, o, meh, pati, yang, karongrong. When kaka, katie, yang, committee, kasumbal, and, anan, wood, on, malung, kubungisap. Niyara lap, you kawe it, or alap, mey, kaka, kita, some, committee, money. O, ninduan, report, beg, beg, malwood, kabur, ma, on, meya, o, sapul, man, kita, beg, beg, me, Chancellor, kalangan, my Mrs. Speaker.
Kalangan, Chairman, we're gonna kawe it, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Triola, Libynyar Ryesek limao, meh, to, Masanabe, Kamui.
Kalangan, Mrs. Speaker.
Senator Perez.
Eh, pato, one, report, with Chancellor. Chancellor, mucha, istu, ban, kaba, keta, money, ka. Uh, the car, view, men, pato, one, together, motion, and regentti, Masanabe.
Chairman. Standing committee report, with Chancellor. Chancellor, meh, meyer, Kamogut, you, tail, and regentti, Masanabe, o, mey, o. Utuban, Kamogut, Masalaa, Masanabe, ban, bonus, Kamogut, chorus mood, chung. Tail, and regentti, Masanabe, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Triola, Libynyar Ryesek limao, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, Kamogut, payta, chorus mood, chung, tail, and kamanata, report, wood, Masaniyei. Hey. Whoa, Masaniso, rangwood, tail, kamanata, standing committee report Ryop Kriyaysek, Triola, Libynyar Ryesek limao.
Speaker, point of information.
Kamui, Senator Perez.
Kalangan, Mrs. Speaker. Ban, pato, one, magtaishu, kalangan, kuya, kosak sit, kala, bali, ma, namenika, tail, kuya, klanwood, we're be.
Tail, konval, ma, nah, tail, konval, ma. My kawe. We will vote for it.